For the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's admit to the flag that I'm a door could make it tonight. At this time, I ask Mr. Carpenter here to do his A-OK award to student council.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Halleck. So we're going to start, we have one person here for an A-OK award who's in the crowd, and I thank you for coming, Claire. So Claire, if you could please come on up. So Claire, this A-OK award was given by your bus driver, Ms. Shibel. All right, and you were a huge help in the beginning of the school year. You need, she needed some help with a pre-K student on the bus. You'd come up to the front and help buckle him in safely. You helped him learn how to buckle the belt himself, so you were teaching him, which was wonderful. And you made sure he was in a safe seat before returning to her own. You did this every day for the first month of the school year. And again, from Mrs. Shibel, you were a huge help to her as a driver, who has a responsibility to make sure that everyone is safe. All right, Claire is the one that she goes to if she needs help for other students on the bus, and she has great trust in your abilities. So please give me a round of applause for Claire's A-OK award. All right, and inside Claire, you have a certificate as well as a free ice cream cone from the corner. All right, thank you very much. All right, if I could then have my student council members, please come on up. All right, so you guys are going to face the crowd, and I'm going to hand out your certificates. All right, so student council is something new that we initiated last year in my first year here. So this is my second student council, and I'd like to introduce first our president of George Ross McKenzie Elementary School, Riley Abado. Our vice president in 5th grade, Gavin Gass. And then we have our student council representatives who are here tonight. We have Aiden Smith, Sidney Moscatello, Mila Mullen, Jewel Shaw, and Mila Genesco. Now, on the back of this, boys and girls, you're going to have your oath that you're going to take tonight. Okay, and we're going to say this together. So I'm going to say it, and then you're going to repeat after me. So if you look on the back, Jewels, it's right there for you. All right, so when you see the blank, and I say "I," and then there's a blank, that's when you say your name. Okay? So, "On my honor, I promise to..." So we're going to try that a little louder. I know I have a microphone, but you got to make sure everybody, especially the moms in the back in here. Okay, so really loud. "On my honor, I promise to..." "Uphold the standards and ideals of George Ross McKenzie Elementary School." "Cooperate with the faculty and student body in all things which they perform." "Proudly lead my peers and openly listen to their concerns." "At all times, I will be an exemplary role model for all to see." Please give me a round of applause for the George Ross McKenzie Student Council. Thank you guys very much. All right, have a great night, guys. Great job.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. You want to A-OK award?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Trying to rig this because I don't have a clip for Mr. Carpenter here, but that's okay. So my first A-OK award, this student's not here tonight, but that's Josias Labuna, so I'd like to give it up for him. Yes, he's playing basketball right now over at the junior senior high school. And he will be honored at our academic awards assembly that I'm going to have about a week or so during school for the students. Okay? And my next A-OK award is for Mr. Justin Bang. So come on up here, Justin, please. Stay right there. I'm going to read this. "Face the crowd, face the crowd." I think Mom made you come here tonight, right? I can tell. All right, so, "But it's a good thing. Almost every morning when I drop my children off at the high school, it is difficult to leave the parking lot due to cars on Route 55. Anytime Justin is there at the same time I am, he stops and does not turn in, so I can get out safely. I have also witnessed him doing this for other cars waiting to get out. This courtesy may seem small to Justin, but his kind act makes my morning much easier and safer." Thank you, Justin, and this is from Ms. Sheridan Council, who's a teacher here at the elementary school. All right, very nice job.
All done. All right, at this time, if you'd like to stay and be bored and listen to us, you're welcome to, and we will not hold it against you if you want to leave. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys. Thank you.
I know we're not, we won't be insulted.
Have a good night, Claire.
At this time, we'll go over the calendars for 2023, 2024. There were a couple changes. Graduation was going to be held on a Wednesday, and I thought that it should be held on Friday. Because it always has been, so I just thought that would make it easier for people. I discussed it with Tracy. So that was one change. And then, of course, if you guys don't approve, we can change it tonight. And there was another one about record-based superintendent schools for approval. Hold on, what was the other one change that we moved? Did we move it there or we didn't?
We did.
We did move it there.
It was just about graduation.
It was just about graduation.
We did embed seven snow days into next year's calendar. We did, instead of taking, like this year, we had the week off at Thanksgiving. We actually put the parent-teacher conferences on the Tuesday night, Tuesday day night, and then you have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday off. And then we took those days and still had the seven snow days to a February break. So the President's Week, President's Day would actually be a week.
That makes more sense.
In the middle of winter, when we tend to get our worst weather.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So the question was, because school ends on the 26th, and then we would have graduation on the 28th, and that's what we have done in the past.
Is everybody good with that?
Yep.
And that's a Friday. And that's a Friday.
Absolutely.
All right, I'll take a vote. May I see?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so it's all yeses. At this time, we will have the superintendent's report.
Well, to kind of go along with the calendar discussion, you know, snow days for this year has been exhausted. We have taken all four of our snow days. So if we do have to close school, we will have, we will utilize remote instruction. The chargers have been sent home at the elementary school for Chromebooks. If we have a feeling and that we can call a day early, then Chromebooks will be sent home that afternoon for the elementary kids. And again, if weather works with us, then we are good. The state is allowing us to use this remote instruction option instead of taking away other scheduled holiday breaks, like spring. So they are giving us that option. Now again, in the proposed calendar, which you just approved, we have seven snow days built in, so there will be less likelihood we have to go to a remote instruction. It came out through Syracuse newspaper. The 647 New York schools, they ranked them all according to the 3 through 8 ELA and math state assessment scores. We were ranked second in Sullivan County, behind Livingston Manor. Right now, our average proficiency rate in the ELA was 42%, and that put us at number 326 out of 467. And then for math, 39% proficiency rate, which means, you know, level three to level four, and we were ranked at number 263 out of 647. I do believe these scores will increase because we have implemented a lot with ELA literacy and math. So I do, I'm very confident that these scores will increase. The conference day that's coming up in February 1 is this coming Monday on the 13th, and the other one in March. Those schedules have been finalized. This is what the staff, and when I say all staff, it includes secretaries, cafeteria workers, Lisa and I are involved in the training. It's that leader-in-me framework. And what that is, is social and emotional learning framework. It starts with specific paradigms in regards to leadership, potential change, motivation, and education. And this framework is really, it's not a program. I call it like a framework. It's a mindset. It's a holistic approach to social and emotional learning, and it embeds the highly effective practices into our culture. We have a lot of them, now we're just going to keep growing with them. So that's going to be our conference day schedules, and everybody is trained. Custodians, everybody. So it's not just teachers. Because to do this, you have to have everybody on board. I did have two design stakeholders meetings, and the update is, we took their feedback from those two design stakeholder meetings. We contacted Armand with KSQ Design and the Bond Project. They were involved with it. They took all of our critiques. So tomorrow morning, I'm meeting with them again to see the updated renderings for the athletic facilities, the library, and the makerspace. So I'm excited to see that they took our input and how they changed it. And so once I see those new renderings, I will be scheduling additional design stakeholder meetings so people can comment again, because that's the important piece. Governor Hochul has issued her 2324 executive budget proposal. In the newspaper, it'll say that the minimum is 3%. In actuality, it was 2.99%. And I make that clarification because when you're talking about millions of dollars, that tenth of a percent or that actually one, let's see, yeah? Not even tenth of a percent. It makes a difference. So, you know, newspapers say three because they like to round it up. The foundation aid that they have guaranteed us right now is $3,926,429. We could possibly have a net decrease of $82,000. Now, talking to Caleb, that's actually not accurate because they have not taken in account for that we've got, we haven't gotten our credit for our new buses. So once they give us credit for that, we're actually probably going to see a net gain of anywhere from $30,000 to $40,000. So we go from a net decrease to a net gain. I just want us to get the credit for those new buses.
Yeah, the buses, how you, how they determine these, they take these from what's in there in November, right? And we didn't get our buses delivered until the end of October. So they didn't have the data from our bus purchase, because these are just estimates. On our last set of buses, they gave us $130,000 in aid. They're probably going to give us, they're actually probably going to give us a little less because our aid ratio went down. But these buses cost a little more, so it might end up right around $130,000. It'll be more than $82,000.
Which is good. Now, spring semester has started, so I did want to update you on our SUNY-Sullivan courses. So for just spring semester, we've got 10 courses being offered now. 62 of our junior senior high school students are taking advantage of these college courses. And that's 9 through 12. If everybody completes these courses by the end of the year, they pass them, and that is possibility of 299 SUNY credits that will be given to our kids. So they're really taking advantage of this program, and they're running with it. So I know it'll just keep growing. The last thing, well, two more things. One is our biggest thing, the Sunshine Hall Library, they actually started an internship, a paid internship. And so Amanda Ross with the National Honor Society sent four students over there to be interviewed. One of our students, Emma Amato, was chosen for this paid internship. So she actually gets to work at the library until like the end of May. So it's an opportunity. It helps on college applications, as we know, but it also is paid, which is a big thing. And the last thing is, before you leave tonight, and this is Jed, complete congratulations to Jed. He got in our rear projection screen for this building with the sound. So he's got it running in the gym. It looks amazing. Junior senior high school, when's the, to be, what's the date for that one? So as soon as we get in those couple of parts, then we will have that put in at junior senior high school at the stage. And again, it's rear projection, so you don't see any of the materials that comes down from the screen. It's gorgeous, and the sound in there is awesome. So I would say take, go check it out. So, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions from the boards, from Mr. Ferrer? All good? Or we not? Mr. Carpenter here.
Mr. Halleck, good evening, everyone. So my board report for the board meeting tonight. So in front of you, you'll have the attendance. You'll see in green, we've gone up in attendance from last board meeting in every grade level. So our overall attendance is up 0.60%, 0.60% from the last Board of Ed meeting in January. We've seen a really big increase in attendance every day. Today, we had six students absent. Yesterday, we had four. So we're seeing a very increase in our attendance. Pertaining to our academic outcomes. We're still implementing a really great reading program to improve literacy outcomes. Teachers are going to begin their mid-year assessments, which will be giving a data point for student growth. And next year, we're looking at implementing a vocabulary piece for our 4th and 5th graders who may age out of the program as they start to gain mastery. Summer school, it will be pre-K through 6th grade from July 10th, 2023 through August 3rd, 2023. That's 16 academic days. It'll be a half-day of instruction, which includes special area teachers, lunch, and bus transportation. Our state tests are coming up. We have ELA in April. We have the math test in May. And we are looking to initiate a targeted enrichment program for our students in 3rd through 6th grade, help support them in their success on the state assessments, as well as just targeting those students who may need a little additional push. Observations, non-tenure teacher formal observations are complete, and I continue on with my mini observations as I pop into all the classrooms consistently. Our winter enrichment clubs, the staff has really come through. We had 15 winter enrichment clubs for this session, and it had over 190 children in it, so 191 kids. That's over, close to almost 80% of our children in this building in an enrichment club after school, which is just absolutely incredible. And each of the 15 clubs for this session were performed and monitored by a staff member in the building. So there actually weren't any parent volunteers this time, which is just amazing. They've really come through with some great ideas. We have two club, three club actually, teachers here, Ms. Elsis, Ms. Weiss, and Ms. Lombardi. They run a Lego club, a sensory club, and a craft club. And what we found is that children are finding their niche and finding their passions in these clubs, which is just amazing. Odyssey of the Mind competes on March 4th, the first Saturday of the month, and they are practicing each and every week for multiple hours. You might have seen them when they walked in today. They were moving around the building. Odyssey of the Mind is a very competitive academic competition that I'm really excited about. It's our second year having an Odyssey of the Mind team. We're the only school in Sullivan County that competes in Region 5, and that makes me very proud. Again, student council, we had initiation at tonight's Board of Ed meeting, and our student council is supporting our Super Bowl campaign in the school as we begin a food drive to help those families in need within our district. And field trips, we have the John Lennon Project in music. They're going to come into our school. Ms. Wildrick, our music teacher, is going to work with our 4th and 5th graders, and it's a songwriting program that comes to us through the Bosse's Coaster. And they're going to come to us through the Segal Foundation, and they're going to help us with our 4th invictuators develop some music, and we're going to try to incorporate that into our spring concert. 4th and 5th graders are also going to Bethel Woods to see Story Pirates. We've done this previously. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic and other reasons, we got away from it. We're going back to it, and we're really excited about that. And they go on the 27th of February there, which I hope to be able to join them. And that concludes my report.
Any questions from Mr. Carpenter from the board?
No.
All good? Mr. Carpenter, you're up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Halleck. I'll fix this a little bit. So the attendance at the junior senior high school did see an increase of 0.64. I think that beats you, Mr. Carpenter, by 0.4%. That should be noted in the board minutes. Thank you. No, just kidding.
What's your overall?
A total overall of 91.28% of attendance. So we did see a little dip as we went into the holidays, but it's going back up slowly, which is, which is good.
91.68.
Two minutes.
Oh, I'm 68.
Okay, then maybe I did my math wrong. That's all right. Testing. January regions are complete. January regions were from January 24th to January 27th. A total of 23 students took exams in ELA, geometry, and earth science. I really appreciate the junior senior high schools. It's really good to be able to run school in session and also hold important exams like that. You don't see a lot of exams in January. We will see a lot more in June. But all regions have been scanned and uploaded to the database, and you know, we're hoping for the best. So ELA and math for 7th and 8th graders will be taking place in April and May. That is computer-paced testing, and we have a window to complete those exams. Observations for myself, all formal observations for untenured teachers have been complete. I'm beginning to go around and do the mini observations, and they will continue to take place in the next couple of months. Scheduling, Mrs. Ferrer spoke about the junior senior high school college offerings. These are great, and we are going to continue to offer these. And the biggest thing that the scheduling committee is kind of tackling is, how do we keep these students in these classes as they go from 9th grade to 12th grade? Because we want to see them leaving with an associate's degree, if that's what they want. So the biggest thing for us is, we really need to narrow down what correct courses we need to offer as we head into next year. The good thing is, we have a meeting, a meeting with the department coordinators this coming Monday during conference day, and then we will continue meeting with our scheduling consultant, Elliot Maronblum, to determine that. But we really want to see these college offerings, you know, keep going, keep sustainability, and move along with that. The junior senior high school is ready for remote instruction if need be. Thanks to the technology department, I do have a ton of chargers and a ton of Chromebooks. Mr. Carpenter called me one day panicking for chargers. I said, "I don't have any. Why are you asking me?" But we are, we are ready for that if need be. So extracurriculars are moving along. Very grateful for the, you know, the advisors that we have. Lots of fundraisers taking place. I feel like, you know, working in the main office, I'm funding some 8th grade trips and some senior trips, but cookie dough, Little Caesars, things like that. So it's been, it's been crazy, but people are fundraising, and it's good stuff. Just a brief athletic update. We had, you know, track and field continues to go to the Armory. Wrestling continues to compete. I believe they have some sectionals or championships coming up. And our boys and girls basketball teams are, but believe both are going to be heading to the playoffs. The seating meeting is February 22nd for that. So we're looking forward to that and entering the playoffs. So athletic season's moving along, extracurriculars moving along, and all is well. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Carpenter, any questions from the board?
Thank you.
All good? Two, three, four. That's three.
So to start my report, I want to say congratulations to Lindsay Zagrodick, who won shot put champion at the Sullivan County Track Meet. And congratulations to Isabel Simonsen for winning a silver and bronze medal at the Sullivan County Track Championships. So the track team will be going to West Point on Friday for their sections. And senior night for girls varsity basketball will be on Monday. And Tuesday for the boys, and Varsity Club has been preparing for that a lot. And on the 18th, Archery has a tournament in Pennsylvania. On Wednesday, February 15th, Honor Society will be holding a blood drive. Student council is going to be starting to host their annual promposal. And prom is going to be on May 20th at Villaroma in Calicoon from 6:30 to 10:30. And as of right now, Fishing Club is just looking to find new fishing pools and hope that they can have a good spring fishing season. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Carpenter, support, Mr. Krebs.
Mr. Halleck, a couple people took off some things, so I'll just pick up where nothing was talked about. Right now, Teachers College at Columbia University is going to be offering some professional development opportunities for teachers, most of them at the elementary level. So Mr. Carpenter here is working with staff to see who and when we can provide those opportunities. We have a literacy coach that has been coming into the elementary school, and she's going to be seeking some volunteers for a book study. I guess Mr. Carpenter here put an order in for one already, so he'll have it ahead of time. And so, and lastly, at the junior senior high school, a company called Up and Running finished up cleaning, repairing, and painting some of the equipment in the fitness center and providing some future equipment recommendations. So those were the things that happened. And the fitness center at the high school was off limits yesterday because of the paint fumes, but the equipment looks great. They did a really good job. We were having a lot of trouble trying to find somebody to come into district where we are to service our equipment. So we're hoping that every six months to a year, we can have them come back and assist us with the equipment functioning and things like that. So that's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Krebs and the board?
Mr. Krebs, do you know when the fitness center is open, what the hours are?
Not specific. I know that our, that the football team is doing some things after, but for the outside individuals that come in, does anybody else know when they?
As far as I know, with the volunteers that we have, I do believe it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 8 to 10.
Okay.
Yes, I believe that's correct, too, from Mr. Ferrer.
Anything else? Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so we're in the process of putting together the budget for the fiscal year 2023, '24. I believe Tracy's already reached out to you guys about doing possibly a budget workshop, which is something that we haven't done in the past, but it gets everybody involved so you guys can see what's going on. Because in the next, not next year, but the year after, all of the COVID fund monies are gone. So we're going to have to decide which of the programs that were done with COVID money we want to keep, we don't want to keep, what we want to go through. And that'll be something we need to go down on like a finer level. The budget I gave you guys to look over for right now assumes a 3% tax increase. That's right around the cap. The cap's actually going to be slightly higher than 3%. It assumes that we're going to hold our supplies steady, which shouldn't be a problem. That other expenditures will be held at 1.5% and it has salaries growing at 3%. So this is just a rollover budget right now. This is not, I've been meeting with everybody here to fine-tune the budget, but this budget right now is just rolled over who we have right now and increased by 3%. So this is not the end-all, be-all here. On the revenue side, however, it's a little bit closer. Those numbers are what our tax cap is. Those numbers are what the executive budget has proposed. So if you're looking at the revenue number, that's what we're going to have next year. That's pretty close. Our fiscal stability score from NICE Ed is zero for the second year in a row. We have no designation of fiscal stress for the third year in a row. It's only been two years that we've had zero. In order to have a zero overall score, you must have enough cash on hand to pay a month's expenditures, have 3% or higher in your unassigned fund balance. Ours is actually 11%, but we're going to take that down when we put the money into the capital project. Because you're not allowed to have it over more than four. You have to have 10% of next year's funds in reserves. We have 20. You have to have no net deficit funding years for three straight years. We're at five now. 17, 18 is the last time we ran a deficit. And you have to take out no short-term loans to operate, which we have not. Now, just to give you guys a heads up for next year, we probably will have a score. We won't have fiscal stress. There's a difference. So we're going to have about six points because how you have to account for transferring the money that we're putting in towards the capital project, it shows up as an expenditure in your general fund and as a revenue in your capital projects fund. So this year, 2223, when I transfer the 1.5 million that we agreed to into the capital fund, that's going to show as a deficit, which will give us one deficit, which is 6.77 points. 25 is fiscal stress. So we'll still hit all of the cash targets. We'll still hit our fund balance targets. We're not going to have any short-term debt to run, so we should still be good. But I just want to give you a heads up when you see points next year. That's why. And then finally, the fuel bids came in. I actually attached a sheet of what the bids were. We're awarding them all to Bottini. We're fixing our rate for number two heating oil. That came in at $3.25 about, which I don't think we're going to get a better deal than that. I don't think it's really going to go down much less, so we felt it was worth it to do 325. However, our diesel fuel I did not lock us into. In order to fix our diesel fuel, we'd have to lock in 358 for clean and 379 for blended. We ordered blended for most of the year, 70/30 blend. That's 70% diesel, 30% kerosene. Our last fuel order for diesel was $3.39, so they want me to fix in at higher than what we're paying right now. All the reports from the United States Energy Office are saying that they expect it to decline over the next year. So I didn't think it would be prudent to lock in. I know Monticello also did not lock in, and so that's what we're going with there. It worked out well for us this year, and I think it's the way to go for next year. So we've already notified Bottini, but you will be voting on that today also. That's all I have for today.
Very good. So when do we want to have that work day, or work night? Do we come up with a date? I know there's an email going around, but I didn't.
Well, and that's why I would say either March 1st, March 2nd. It's a Wednesday or a Thursday.
Does everybody have their calendar in front of them? Can we make that date? So a workshop is strictly for us to work. It's not, no public comment. It's, I mean, it's an open, it's an open meeting, but it's just strictly for us to go over. but it's just strictly focused over the budget.
March 1st or 2nd?
Yes.
Yeah, me too.
You good, Kristen?
Yeah.
March 1st at 6 o'clock?
Okay.
At the high school?
Yep.
Or they have a game? You wanna play it safe here?
You should be fine. It should be sexual, but I'll look though.
We'll just plan on it being over there, because you're.
March 1st is fine.
Yeah, okay. March 1st at the junior, senior high school.
6:00 P.M.
6:00 P.M.
Okay.
So two weeks beforehand, I will email you guys all the more detailed numbers, like how many teachers are in each line and things like that.
Okay. Any other questions for Caleb at this time? Okay, thank you, sir. So real quick, as you can see, we're meeting all our goals here with our money end of it. You know, four years ago, we were, we were in rough shape. And we're, we're above where we should be. But of course, we're gonna fix that with the capital project. We're gonna do so. We're in really good shape. And it's everybody coming to work every day and doing what they do. So I wanna thank everybody for that. At this time, I have more to say under new business. And what you got there? Public comment on the consent agenda items only. Anybody have any public comment? All good? At this time, I will take a motion to approve 501 through 804.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Stacy?
I'll second it.
Second by Nancy. Any discussion on any of the items? All good, I'll take the vote. Nancy?
Yeah.
Kristen?
Yeah.
Stacy?
Yes.
Yes, all yeses. Okay, this time, any old business to come before the board? All right, so the workshop is taken care of. So I brought up to Mrs. Ferrera and Caleb, and I ran it past Stacy. And I wanna run it past the rest of everybody on the board. What would everybody think about putting an ice skating rink on the lower field to give the kids something to do in the wintertime? Now, if you do an ice skating rink and you put four or five inches of water on it, it's gonna freeze a lot faster than any lakes are. And Mrs. Ferrera, I called her up one day. I said, you know, I tried to do this when I was on the town board, and it failed. But I think personally, there's a few around. There was one in Neersburg. There was one in Middletown. I just think it would be something good for the kids to be able to go. They go down there, and they shoot baskets all the time. Well, in the wintertime, if you're snow, they can't. So I was thinking, if we had an ice skating rink there for them, they could go. If it was big enough, the boys could play hockey. I mean, girls can too, but I mean, I know, you know. But I don't know. I threw it out there. Of course, it's too late this year, but I think it's something that we wanna do. I think we ought to decide to do it now so that we can, you know, be on board for next year. That's what I'm thinking. And, you know, pre-numbers that we're looking at is like, what? $3,800, $4,000?
Yeah, at the most.
At the most, to do it.
At the high school?
At the high school.
What is it, like a big pool kind of thing?
It is. It's a border. I mean, you could buy them. I mean, I know guys that built them in their backyard. I worked with a guy that built one in his backyard. His son was a huge hockey player. It's, you know, you just ring it, and you get a nice liner. You line it. And I'll arrange to have the fire companies come in and fill it, so we don't have to buy water.
It'd be right by where the tennis court and basket.
It's flat.
The soccer field, the flat area. Yep. And if we have to do a little leveling or whatever, I have equipment, I'll do it, you know, with me no charge.
That area is free level.
That area is free level.
The kits I was looking at is literally kits, because whatever we put out, I would like to be able to replicate it every year. So then looking into companies, well, first, I did look into our insurance. You know, we have basketball courts. They're used all the time, so it wouldn't impact our insurance.
That's what's gonna be my question.
Yeah, it doesn't impact our insurance. And same thing, it's tennis courts. We still have that. So, you know, two different companies I was looking at. And again, we're talking about, one of the companies, they're talking about 92 foot by, 92 feet by 200 feet? $3,200.
That's a nice size rink. That's a really nice.
But the important thing for me is being able to roll it out and then roll it back up, store it, and then be able to replicate it every year.